Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Louis?
Here.
Mark Ham?
Here.
Lynn Lewis? Adam Webb?
Here, we stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item two is the consent docket. Item A, approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held June twentieth, twenty twenty-two. B, receive the minutes of the regular planning commission meeting held May tenth, twenty twenty-two. C, reappoint Robert Clark and Aiden Street to the Moore Urban Renewal Authority for a two-year term beginning July first, twenty twenty-two. D, renew existing contract with Presort First Class for the printing, stuffing, and mailing of city utility bills for the pay period of August first, twenty twenty-two through July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. E, approve no-cost change of order number two with crap Reynolds Construction for an increase in the contract time needed to complete construction of the southeast lift station, force main sewer line project by thirty days to remediate saddle strap failures at ten air and vacuum valve locations. Item F, approve a change to the pay grade assignment for emergency communications dispatcher from grade one zero six to grade one zero nine to more accurately reflect duties, responsibilities, and accountabilities, assigned effective July first, twenty twenty-two, in accordance with the budget approved by city council for fiscal year twenty-two through twenty-three. Item G, approve and change the pay grade assignment for emergency communications lead dispatcher from grade one zero eight to grade one eleven to more accurate reflect duties, responsibilities, and accountabilities, assigned to be effective July first, twenty twenty-two, in accordance with the budget approved by city council for fiscal year twenty-two to twenty-three. Item H, approve and ratify claims and expenditure for fiscal year twenty-one to twenty-two in the amount of three million, seven hundred and forty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars and thirty-five cents.
Most approve.
Second.
Can you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes. Item three, discuss and consider ordinance number one zero zero six zero two, amending Part Four, Chapter Four, Article A of the Moore City Code by amending Section four dash one zero four by adding requirements limitation for backyard chickens and establishing a sunset date, providing for severability, and providing for repillar.
I know we had tabled this once before, and I appreciate that, and we had the city staff go back and do a little bit more research. And I've actually changed my mind on this, and based upon the the research that the city has provided to us, I don't know that, and this is just my own opinion, I don't know if we're ready to administrate or deal with some of the issues that might arise from having this ordinance allowing chickens in our community. I know we're going to be building a new animal shelter very soon, so they're going to be busy with a lot going on, so I would probably, I would make a motion that we were, we would deny this ordinance.
Well, before we second, is there anybody here that wants to speak on this? No?
And Brooks, when the new animal shelter is built, is there a potential that we could have more staff and then we could revisit that if, if the council desires?
Yes, if the council desires at that time, yes.
I'll second the motion to deny.
We have a motion and a second. Can you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes. Item four, consider rezoning application number RZ dash one zero two-two located in the southeast quadrant of Section thirteen, Township ten North, Route three West, being south of southwest Fourth and east of Santa Fe Avenue from A-one Rural Agriculture District to R-one Single Family Dwelling District, and approve ordinance number seven twenty-two, application by Justin Rhodes. Planning Commission recommended approval seven to zero.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This property is located north of southeast Fourth Street and west of Bryant Avenue. The property is currently zoned A-two suburban agriculture. It does have one existing home on the site. The applicant is proposing to develop the property, the property as single-family neighborhood with about seven home sites on one cul-de-sac street. In order to develop the property as he desires, the property must be rezoned to R-one Single Family. Public water and sewer are available to serve the site. Access is from southeast Fourth Street. There is a FEMA designated floodplain located on the east side of the property. At this time, the applicant has not proposed any significant changes to the floodplain, and stormwater detention is required. The site does lie within a site, area that is residential in nature. It's surrounded by traditional R-one developments as well as acreage, single-family home sites to the west, and Veterans Park is located to the southeast of the site. Envision Moore twenty forty plan calls for its location to be urban residential. The plan describes this as a mix of single-family detached units, can be up to seven dwelling units per acre. However, this application is not asking for seven dwelling units per acre. This application was reviewed as to its conformance with the intent of the plan. Because R-one uses and developments are considered compliant with this land use designation, amendment to the plan is not necessary. This application is for an infill development, and it is compatible in nature and use to the surrounding area. The subject site does have R-one zoning that surrounds the property on the northeast and south sides. And the applicant has proposed densities that are similar in nature to those existing developments. Staff recommends approval of this application. There was some citizens at the planning commission meeting. Their main concern was the drainage. There is an existing drainage channel on the property that was recently improved by the city of Moore, and the residents did express concerns about the continuing upkeep of that maintenance channel with the additional home sites draining into it. And of course, the development would have to follow the twenty twenty-one drainage criteria that was adopted in twenty twenty-one, which is quite stringent upon, on the infrastructure that is required for stormwater as well as the maintenance and upkeep of that infrastructure. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So, I haven't had any calls on this. I know I called you, Elizabeth, and asked you about it or emailed you. This is the several, there's several large home sites, and it's almost directly across from the entrance of Haiti Estates, but I haven't heard anyone complaining. I know the drainage was a concern, though.
Yeah. So, is there anyone here that wished to?
Is there anyone that would like to speak to this? Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Joyce Gunder, eighteen hundred Parkway. We've lived in our house for eighteen years, and as I spoke when we met a few weeks ago, we've seen flooding up until the twenty-one, when they redid the drainage ditch. It really has worked. It was pretty scary to think that we weren't in an area that required flood insurance as close as it did come previously. And now they've fixed it, so our biggest concern is because they're talking about rerouting it where it kind of, right at our backyard, it starts to curve towards Fourth Street, and they're talking about making it more of an L, and so I'm worried about how the water's going to congregate where it Ls, where now it has like a gradual curve to kind of make it flow. So, you know, after all these years of dealing with water after the rain, and then now it's finally corrected, that's our main concern, is that here they finally have it fixed, and all these extra houses coming in and how they're going to, you know, anytime you disturb the ground and regrade it, you have new runoff areas, and so that's my main concern.
Elizabeth, have we addressed that issue with the engineers?
So, this is the rezoning application, which is the very beginning of the development process.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
So, if the council decides to approve this tonight, the developer's engineer will go back, start to run those calculations, and prepare the plans, where then you will see a preliminary plat and a flat.
So, we have a chance to review it again before the, yeah.
What's the normal drainage direction on this property? By, by default, what direction does it drain? Towards Fourth Street?
I believe it drains towards Fourth Street.
Okay. Okay, alright.
There is, there is a part of what the twenty-one plan did was build a concrete containment area back in the, in this neighborhood.
Okay.
So, is that, is that drainage ditch on the north or the south side of the property?
Right now, it kind of cuts through a corner of the property. It's not, it doesn't hug the property boundaries, in other words, it kind of cuts diagonally across.
Okay. Alright, so they will have to redirect its water flow, so.
Potentially, yes. I know that's what they want to do, but again, what I stated at the planning commission meeting is that the drainage of this property is going to drive the development of it.
Absolutely.
Not the other way around. There's too many drainage concerns on the property.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Would, thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak? Do we have a motion or a second?
I make a motion that we approve.
A second.
Any call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes, motion carries. Item five, consider the plat of QuickTrip number seven zero one-one located in the northeast quadrant of Section ten, Township ten North, Route three West, being south of northeast Twenty-seventh Street and west of the I thirty-five Service Road. Application by AAB Engineering LLC, QuickTrip Corporation. Planning Commission recommend approval four to three.
This property is located west of I thirty-five and south of northwest Twenty-seventh Street, is five point two five acres in size, is currently zoned C-three as a planned unit development that was approved in January of twenty twenty-two. The applicant is proposing to develop the property as a travel, a center and convenience store with six diesel pumps and a truck scale located on the property. The final plat is what we're hearing tonight, which is required to combine the separate parcels that were involved in this development plan and establish necessary easements for the development of the property. Public water and sewer are available to serve the site. There is no FEMA floodplain located on the property. Access is provided from northwest Twenty-seventh Street, the I thirty-five Service Road, and Northmore Avenue. The applicant prepared a traffic impact analysis with the rezoning application. The impact analysis did say, conclude that the total build-out year of twenty twenty-three, the intersections of Twenty-seventh Street and the I thirty-five Service Road, or Broadway, as it's also known, and the Shields Northmore Avenue will experience longer delays than they do today. To mitigate the increased congestion, the following actions should be taken. Installation of either a flashing warning beacon and reduced speed limits on Shields Boulevard and Northmore Avenue as a minimum, but with a fully signalized intersection as the preferred option for that intersection. Signal timing and phasing adjustments at the I thirty-five and northwest Twenty-seventh Street intersections, and restriping the northwest Twenty-seventh Street from I thirty-five to the westernmost driveway to include a turn lane. City staff is in contact with ODOT and the applicant about implementing these recommendations prior to the opening of this facility. And just as an update that happened just recently, after the planning commission's review, ODOT is considering placing the intersection of Northmore Avenue and Shields under the city's jurisdiction, which would then allow us to move forward with the fully signalized intersection, which is the preferred option. They haven't made a final decision on that, but that's what they are looking into right now. On-site stormwater detention is required, and it is proposed to be an underground facility under the southwest portion of the parking lot. If you remember, this was APUD. Some of the amenities include sixty trees with a minimum three-inch caliper and two hundred shrubs, eighty percent masonry facade, a thirty-six hundred square foot rain garden, and a ten-foot trail located along northwest Twenty-seventh Street, which is compliant with the Trails Plan in the Envision Moore twenty forty plan. The Envision Moore twenty forty plan calls for its location to be transitional commerce. These land uses rely on access and visibility from interstates and major roadways. And this application was reviewed as to its conformance with the plan, and with the amenities provided in the APUD, the proposed land use is conformant with the comprehensive plan. Amendment is not necessary. Staff recommends approval of this application. We had a lot of discussion at the planning commission meeting regarding this item. All of that discussion centered around the safety issues at the Shields and Northmore Avenue intersection. At that time, we did not have the information from ODOT that we have today. And that was, you'll see that some of the commissioners did recommend denial of the plat, and it was because of the concern that ODOT would not allow a fully signalized intersection. So, knowing that the information that we have today, it's very likely some of the commissioners might have voted differently.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Is there anyone? Oh, sorry, go ahead. I was just going to see if anyone was here to speak on this. Go ahead, please, sir. So, the signalization, that will be on our dime?
That would be a cost-sharing arrangement we would have with QuickTrip.
Okay.
ODOT was, the conversation we had with ODOT, they were certainly more receptive when they weren't going to have to provide any of the funding, and then the conversation went from there to where it seemed like maybe the best solution would be just to give the city jurisdiction over that intersection.
Can I make a motion to approve?
Second.
Can you call for the vote, please?
Elizabeth, have, do you, I know the applicant's not here, but have you heard anything about the timeframe?
The applicant is actually here.
Oh, are they?
And we do have their building permit plans that we've already, this has gone through the first review, so they are working towards getting their full permit.
So, they're late twenty-two into twenty-three is the construction phase? Is that what I heard you say?
I will have the applicant speak to that. I don't know exactly their timeline.
Okay.
My name's Alan Betts, and I'm with AAB Engineering. We're the engineers and surveyors for the project. Late twenty-two construction start is probably realistic. It won't. These are about six months, which is what we've been budgeting for time, just, just takes a little longer, the travel centers.
Okay. Would the construction start, does that include the demolition, or would that start sooner of the existing?
I think, and, and don't, I'm not promising this far, they were going to accelerate the demolition on it so that those would happen beforehand, so that that's one thing that we can get out of the way without having to tie it to the rest of the project.
Alright, great. Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor and Council, just a discussion that I had with QuickTrip. My understanding is the demolition of the existing buildings will probably occur within the next sixty days, so.
Okay, perfect.
Alright.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Will you call for the vote, please?
Melissa, did you second that one?
I did.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes. Item carries. Item six, consider adopting resolution number twenty-five twenty-two, authorizing the city of Moore to submit an application to the Oklahoma nine-one-one Management Authority Grant Program.
Vice Mayor and Council, I've been asked to present this to you tonight. It's one of the early steps in requesting your permission to submit a grant application to the nine-one-one authority that would provide enhancements to our current nine-one-one communication center. These, again, are early steps as part of a PSAP consolidation with the county sheriff's office where we would incorporate their emergency communications into our facility and provide dispatch services for them. A couple of things that that would do is it would not only increase our capacity within that part of our facility, but we also believe that when you look at the percentages of their call volume and their services versus our call volume and our services, we would actually receive more of a benefit for that consolidation. However, this nine-one-one grant would be very beneficial in helping us achieve that long-term goal, so we'd recommend approval.
So, would we dispatch for the sheriff's office, or will they continue to hire their own dispatchers and just dispatch out of our facility?
So, we, just for simplicity purposes, we are in discussions with the sheriff's office at this point that we would hire additional staff, and then they would reimburse souring benefits in a quarterly or yearly billing cycle.
You know, something to consider would be their current dispatchers. I would hate for them to lose their job.
Yes, one of the things, so at this point, they have, are in discussions about five. There would be five additional staff that would be brought on under the auspices of sheriff's workload. And the sheriff is very much wanting to allow members that choose to come over, to be able to come over, and so they would get kind of right of first refusal, and he has also offered them other positions inside the sheriff's office if they didn't want to make that move.
Okay, great.
So, it looks like this is, is it a grant for one year?
It, it is a, it is a, essentially, it's an, an equipment grant that would be expended. We would expend the money, and then they would reimburse us up to eighty percent, and the other twenty percent, the sheriff's office would be covering.
What about the salaries of the new employees? Is that something that we'll put in future budgets?
Well, we would ultimately have to put that into our budget where we would pay the money, but then we'd be reimbursed that money from the county.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, I would make a motion to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Will you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes. Item carries. Item seven, consider approval of ordinance number one zero zero nine twenty-two, amending Part twelve, Chapter four, Article G, Section twelve dash four five three, by reducing the number of trees and shrubs required for base landscaping, providing severability and providing for a repillar.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is more of a housekeeping item. You may recall that ordinance number one thousand four point two-two was approved by council on April eighteenth of this year. That ordinance updated the city's landscaping regulations by requiring more open space and plant variety. But whenever we did the comparisons with other surrounding communities, we determined that the amount of trees that we require really was this, almost the same as other comparable cities. So, the decision was made to not increase the amount of trees. Unfortunately, there was a number that I failed to update. And basically, we need to update that number in order to keep the same amount of landscaping that we previously had in the ordinance. So, the previous ordinance required five tru, I'm sorry. One tree and two shrubs for every four hundred square foot of open space, but since we doubled the open space, that would have doubled the amount of trees. So, we, that really should read, one tree and two shrubs for every eight hundred square feet of open space in order to keep the same amount of trees. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Most approve.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Will you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes. Item carries. Item eight, consider approval of an agreement with Metropolitan Fair Housing Council, funded with Community Development Block Grant COVID-nineteen funds to provide fair housing services for more residents affected by the coronavirus pandemic.
Vice Mayor and Council, there's still a need for free fair housing services for more residents in response to the coronavirus pandemic. Tenants are still struggling to keep up with housing payments and facing possible eviction. To help residents stay in their homes, Metro Fair Housing will provide the following services. Four free legal clinics and more for residents impacted by the pandemic, with a direct mailing advertising the free legal clinics to at least five hundred low-income tenants of multifamily properties and homeowners, and free emergency housing mediation services between landlord and tenant as well as homeowner and lender to prevent homelessness. And this contract is for an amount of thirty-seven thousand, two hundred dollars in CDBG COVID-nineteen funding.
Any discussion?
Most approve.
Second.
Call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes. Motion carries. Item nine, consider approval of ordinance number one zero zero eight two-two, amending Part eight, Health and Nuisances, Chapter twelve, Medical Marijuana, Section eight dash one two zero three, Medical Marijuana Dispensary, Section eight dash one two zero four, Commercial Medical Marijuana Growing Facility, Section eight dash one two zero five, Commercial Medical Marijuana Processing Facility, Section eight dash one two zero six, Medical Marijuana Testing Laboratory Facility, Section eight dash one two zero seven, Medical Marijuana Research Facility, and Section eight dash one two zero eight, Medical Marijuana Education Facility, by removing the fee table from the city code and retaining said fees in the fee schedule, providing for severability and providing for a repillar.
Vice Mayor and Council, what this, as a change to our medical marijuana ordinance, what this is doing is simply removing the table of fees from the code. It is not changing the fees themselves. What this will do, it will, it will help us change the fees to future by simply changing the fee schedule, not having to change the schedule and the code at the same time. When I noticed that the table was in there, I don't know how it got in there initially, so today we're just going to be asking to remove the table. That way, the, the fees will remain in the fee schedule.
Make a motion to approve.
Sorry.
Any other discussion? Will you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes. Item carries. Item ten, consider designating the purchase of three additional Ford police vehicles totaling one hundred fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars, utilizing the second round of American Rescue Act Plan Funds.
Vice Mayor and Council, when we came before you the first time with the police vehicles, we had not included the two detective vehicles that are part of this, and then also at that time, we hadn't made the agreement with the schools for the additional SRO vehicle. So, it's those three vehicles. We have the available ARPA money. Request approval, request approval.
So, it will be like thirty-nine now?
Yes, and, and they'll, and they'll be in the bid package to go out, to put them all out for bids, so hopefully.
Received, we've got the money?
Yes, we have, we have the money.
So, we're going to, how long will it take to get those vehicles? Do we know, once they're ordered?
Uh, we'll, we'll, we'll have to see. We don't, we don't know right now, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Will you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes. Motion carries. Item eleven, consider authorizing repair of compaction body and sanitation truck unit number one three seven six two in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred ninety-five thousand and forty-two cents, using One Source Parts LLC as manufacturer and sole source provider.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is for the repair of a twenty thirteen sanitation truck, and this is just for the body, not the cab and the chassis. The, the body has rusted out, so the packer unit wasn't working too well, so we had to take it to the original manufacturer. That's why I said sole source.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes. Item carries. Item twelve, consider authorizing the budget purchase of two Pro Z nine seven two SDL dash EFI Cub Cadet mowers from MetroTurf Outdoor Power Equipment in the total amount of thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred seventy-eight dollars and forty cents, using state contract number SW one nine zero.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is for the purchase of a slope mower that will be used in areas such as the Nineteenth Street and Fourth Street exits, that, and this mower can cut up to twenty-five degrees, so.
Nice.
Very good.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any other discussion? Will you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes. Item carries. Item thirteen, consider authorizing the budget purchase of a Komatsu PCMR dash five compact hydraulic excavator from Kirby Smith Machinery Incorporated in the amount of ninety-six thousand, six hundred dollars, using state contract number SW zero four five five.
Vice Mayor and Council, this again is a purchase of a mini excavator to be used by Streets Division's crew for streets and sidewalk repairs, such as panel replacements and deep patching.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Yeah, you, 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 yes.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I already asked if we had the money for all this, so.
Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes. Item carries. Item fourteen, consider authorizing the budgeted purchase of a HAM twelve V V tandem roller with two vibrating rollers from Kirby Smith Machinery Incorporated in the amount of forty-two thousand eight hundred fifty dollars using state contract number S W one-nine-five.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is also for the street crew that will be used for street repair work. And this is a vibratory roller compactor.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? We call for the vote, please.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes. Item carries. Item fifteen, consider approval of a contract with Hire Go for Temporary Staffing for Parks and Cemetery Maintenance with an effective date of July first, twenty-twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three.
Vice Mayor and Council, the contract, um, contains the specifics to hire temporaries for our park and cemetery crews. And they usually hire them through October. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is this who, who we've used in the past?
I believe it is. No, it's a new, new company.
New, okay. I make a motion to approve.
I, I have some questions. Is this, um, is this when, my understanding is, um, recently, recently I've heard complaints about the sta- the cleanup on the weekends at parks. Will this help address that?
Um, that is, we have recreation specialists that clean up on the weekends. The temporaries are Monday through Friday.
Okay.
Regular park crews.
Interesting, okay. I'll second the motion.
Yeah, and I have a.
Oh, God.
So I have a question, but for later, about, not this, but about the cemeteries.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Will you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes. Item carries. Item sixteen, consider the budgeted purchase of one twenty-twenty-two Ford Explorer four-wheel-drive X L T for use as a fire department staff vehicle from Bill Knight Ford in the amount of thirty-five thousand eight hundred forty-seven dollars using state contract number S W zero-zero-three-five.
Uh, good evening to Vice Mayor and Council. This Ford Explorer will be replacing a two thousand eight Expedition with a hundred fifty-one thousand miles on it that'll be utilized in the Fire Marshal's Division.
Most approve. Second.
Thank you, Chief. Any other discussion? We call for the vote, please.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes. Item carries. Item seventeen, consider approval of fiscal year twenty-twenty, twenty-two through twenty-three budget supplement to budget funds and related expenses out of the Hotel Motel tax, tax budget FEMA and brick fund, grant funds, and budget additional equipment and inspection services in the general fund.
Vice Mayor and Council, we are requesting your approval on the following three budget amendments for fiscal year twenty-three. Number one is to budget Hotel Motel tax to purchase an SUV for the Parks Department. Number two is to budget funds to allow for a more accessible and confidential HR reception area and to budget funds that were designated in Community Development's fiscal year twenty-two budget for geo-bond inspection services. Number three is to budget a FEMA grant the city received through the Building Resilience Infrastructure in Communities or BRIC program to fund the Southmore High School detention pond and storm sewer assessment and construction plans. Be glad to answer any questions you might have.
So the, the one about the reception area, are you gonna move it, redo it? What's the plan there?
I believe.
Just purely out of curiosity.
I think it's to bring in some furniture that will more, be able to adapt more to private confidential um, reviews.
But it'll still be out there in that area, okay. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second.
I make a motion, we approve.
Second, the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? We call for the vote, please.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes. Item carries. Recess- will recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item eighteen is a consent docket. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held June twentieth, twenty-twenty-two. Item B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for fiscal year twenty-one to twenty-two in the amount of one million two hundred eighty-five thousand seven hundred thirty-eight dollars and thirteen cents.
Make a motion to approve the consent docket? Second.
We have a motion and a second. We call for the vote, please.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item nineteen is the consent docket. Item A, accept the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held June twentieth, twenty-twenty-two. Item B, approve payment of workers' compensation settlement in the amount of nine thousand nine hundred dollars for C B R number two-zero-five-zero-zero-zero-nine-five-four to Jeremy Darwin and authorize placement on the Ad Valorem tax roll. Item C, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for fiscal year twenty-one through twenty-two in the amount of a hundred ninety-four thousand seventy-four dollars and ninety-six cents.
Most approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We call the, for the vote, please.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. Item twenty is new business. Um, we don't have anybody signed up. Would anybody like to speak? Okay, item two is from city council and trustees.
Just, I heard, uh, I was up in Edmund today on some business and a person that didn't know me, we just got to visiting and talking and they mentioned, we talked about the Fourth of July, how they came down to Moore for our fireworks display 'cause they had heard it was a really good, uh, display. So, from all the way up there to down here, so it was good. And it was good.
It was great. Thank you, Sue and Todd and everybody that took a part in that, making sure that could happen for our citizens.
The, the drone flyers, they were out heavily last night, too.
Yeah. Item C, items from the city manager or trust manager.
Like to invite Chief Herbster to the podium to give a brief summary of the, uh, training that they had at the house just, uh, down the street from us last week.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Uh, Vice Mayor and Council, for those of you that don't know, we were, uh, had, had the privilege of having an acquired structure just right here on Southwest First and Chestnut. Uh, the homeowner gave us access to the house for approximately about a month to do training inside before they demoed the property. Our training staff went through a lot of work and put a lot of time in getting everything approved through D U Q so we could actually do live fire training inside the structure. So Wednesday, we actually lit off about fifteen different fires inside that house and gave our staff a great opportunity to learn from live fire training. We're only as good as we train. We don't get that opportunity very often. So allow them to, to look at a, a lot of different aspects. It wasn't just about putting water on the fire, but starting up the fires, watching how it heated up, watching flow patterns, ventilation, doing search and rescue, kind of looking at thermal layering and the heating. And we, we had five new recruits that graduated Friday that were able to go through that training. Most of them have never been in a fire before, so just kind of learning their limitations in a safe, controlled environment before they get put in that situation for real. So, great opportunity. We're very thankful that we had, uh, the use of that facility. I know we'll have some more to come with the Fourth Street Underpass and other areas in town. But great for our department and, uh, very blessed to have the opportunity.
Awesome, thank you.
If I let you use my house, can I collect on interest?
Ask your agent.
I'm just curious. I don't know. These are things I want to know.
And the HUD will be here this week for a technical review on our D R G R grant. That's all I've got.
All right, thank you. Item twenty-one is Executive Session. Section three-zero-seven, Title Twenty-five, Oklahoma statutes permits the public body to meet an executive session for certain specified reasons under certain specified condition. Is the opinion of the city attorney and the city council, that the city council may consider and adopt a motion to meet an executive session to discuss the following items. Item A, discuss and consider, if deemed appropriate, consider taking legal possible action regarding pending claim filed by Rebecca A. Jones against the City of Moore. And authorize legal counsel and staff to take action as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the city as authorized by twenty-five Oklahoma statute three-zero-seven B four.
Make a motion that we adjourn to executive session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We don't look at that, do we? Do we, can we call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes. We'll convene to executive session.
There, maybe that's what it's always like, and I did, but it seemed like there. It's nuts.
The heat, the heat's the piece that just sucked in out of.
And drinks and stuff. I know. Yeah, we, when we left, there was a line. We cut through the line to go. I didn't wait till the end.
Item C is reconvene from executive session. Do we have a?
And that we reconvene? Second.
Do we have?
No, I think we need to make a motion. I make a motion.
Yeah, do we have a motion for the?
Make a motion, we approve the claim settlement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We call for the vote, please.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes. And the next is adjournment.
Come on.
We have a motion and a second. We call for the vote, please.
Uh, Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
We're adjourned.
Good job, Adam.